We're waiting and your patience, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We begin tonight's meeting with the Budget Information Meeting for the 2021-2022 Budget. Dr. Ruffa?
Thank you. Good evening. This is the third presentation of the 2021-2022 Budget Season. And I wanted to just kind of catch us up. The first two meetings in February, March, we went through the administrative sections, the capital and the program, the line item detail, and I presented probably two versions of the tax cap. We also kind of communicated that it was unlikely, given the expenditures related to the pandemic, that we would be able to continue our trend of coming in well under the cap. And as we predicted, with the tax cap levy amount of 2.31, we predicted that we would be right at that level. And that is what we submitted on March 1st on the OSC Controller website. We also reviewed early information in March regarding the federal assistance, and we walked through that. And we had some guarded optimism that that would help close the budget gap and really help the budget for 2021-2022. So tonight, we're going to focus on how the revenue side of the budget has changed and how some of those changes have impacted our assumptions and our forecasts. What has not changed is our sort of overarching goals of the budget. And while we know that there have been new guidance regarding social distancing, moving from six to three, that that's dependent on community infection scenarios, there's still sufficient uncertainty in the budget to warrant us sort of sticking with our strategy of ensuring that we have sufficient funds in the budget to be able to pivot quickly and respond to changing circumstances in our environment. So what has changed on the revenue side is our ability to meet our programmatic goals while mitigating the impact to the tax levy and our own long-term financial condition. So I'd like to just start at the highest level and let you know where we are at this point, and then go through some of the detail. So most broadly, we're currently at a budget-to-budget increase of 2.28, and that's the budget that's being presented tonight for adoption. And that comes with a tax levy increase of 1.98. This is below the calculated tax cap of 2.31 and certainly below our estimates from February and March of where we thought we would be. That leaves us at about approximately $675,000 under the cap. And this is the graphic from the OSC, the Office of State Controller's submission. And at the bottom square, you can see the first column was our March 1st submission. And then the purple at the bottom, if you can see it, we were right at the cap or $48 under the cap. And now with the submission that I will be doing tomorrow, we'll be at the $674. This slide shows the property tax report card that is also filed with the SED upon board adoption. And this mirrors the OSC submission and to the right, I'll go through the reserve assumptions that underlie the budget. And I wanted to go into detail on some of the revenue changes, but I just want to bring up the point that the difference between the budget and the tax levy, and it's particularly important given in light of this new revenue, our budget at the top is at $247,000,000, that's $247 million. And that is our expenditure plan. Then from that, you subtract all of the different forms of revenue to arrive at the bottom number, which is the tax levy. And that's the amount of funds raised through property taxes after all of those other revenue sources have been exhausted or applied. So we'll start with state aid, and we'll go through that in a moment. And then we go to local revenue of about $11.5 million, predominantly pilots. And then other revenue sources, fees, interest income. Then we go to appropriated fund balance, which we'll talk about, and our use of restricted reserves to get us to the tax levy. The district has received additional money from both federal and state sources. The first source of federal revenue is about $1.5 million for the American Rescue Plan funds. And the funding is based on district's amount of Title I funding. And 20% of those funds must be used to address learning loss. And there are other restrictions.
Waiting and your patience, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We begin tonight's meeting with the Budget Information Meeting for the 2021-22 Budget. Dr. Ruffo?
Good evening. This is the third presentation of the 21-22 Budget season. And I wanted to just kind of catch us up. The first two meetings in February, March, we went through the administrative sections, the capital and the program, the line item detail, and I presented probably two versions of the tax cap. We also kind of communicated that it was unlikely, given the expenditures related to the pandemic, that we would be able to continue our trend of coming in well under the cap. And as we predicted, with the tax cap levy amount of 2.31, we predicted that we would be right at that level, and that is what we submitted on March 1st on the OSC Controller website. We also reviewed early information in March regarding the federal assistance, and we walked through that, and we had some guarded optimism that that would help close the budget gap and really help the budget for 21-22. So tonight, we're going to focus on how the revenue side of the budget has changed and how some of those changes have impacted our assumptions and our forecasts. What has not changed is our sort of overarching goals of the budget. And while we know that there have been new guidance regarding social distancing, moving from six to three, that that's dependent on community infection scenarios, there's still sufficient uncertainty in the budget to warrant us sort of sticking with our strategy of ensuring that we have sufficient funds in the budget to be able to pivot quickly and respond to changing circumstances in our environment. So what has changed on the revenue side is our ability to meet our programmatic goals while mitigating the impact to the tax levy and our own long-term financial condition. So I'd like to just start at the highest level and let you know where we are at this point, and then go through some of the detail. So most broadly, we're currently at a budget-to-budget increase of 2.28, and that's the budget that's being presented tonight for adoption, and that comes with a tax levy increase of 1.98. This is below the calculated tax cap of 2.31 and certainly below our estimates from February and March of where we thought we would be. That leaves us at about approximately $675,000 under the cap. And this is the graphic from the OSC, the Office of State Controller's submission, and at the bottom square, you can see the first column was our March 1st submission, and then the purple at the bottom, if you can see it, we were right at the cap or $48 under the cap, and now with the submission that I will be doing tomorrow, we'll be at the 674. This slide shows the property tax report card that is also filed with the SED upon board adoption, and this mirrors the OSC submission, and to the right, I'll go through the reserve assumptions that underlie the budget. And I wanted to go into detail on some of the revenue changes, but I just want to bring up the point that the difference between the budget and the tax levy, and it's particularly important given in light of this new revenue. Our budget at the top is at 247, 160, 25, that's 247 million, and that is our expenditure plan. Then from that, you subtract all of the different forms of revenue to arrive at the bottom number, which is the tax levy, and that's the amount of funds raised through property taxes after all of those other revenue sources have been exhausted or applied. So we'll start with state aid, and we'll go through that in a moment, and then we go to local revenue of about 11.5 million predominantly pilots, and then other revenue sources, fees, interest income. Then we go to appropriated fund balance, which we'll talk about, and our use of restricted reserves to get us to the tax levy. The district has received additional money from both federal and state sources. The first source of federal revenue is about 1.5 million for the American Rescue Plan funds, and the funding is based on district's amount of Title I funding, and 20% of those funds must be used to address learning loss. And there are other restrictions and rules on these funds, some more waiting to come through, and any remaining funds after the 20% can be used to address any of those items that are listed there, including improving indoor air quality, improvements to facilities, summer learning, mental health services and support, and addressing learning loss. The second federal piece is the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriation, and that's about 663. That has similar allowable purposes as the ARP, and this one, the funds can be used starting with expenses from the onset of school closures in March 2020. So the federal funds, again, we're still waiting for guidance on these. The federal funds can be used over multiple years. These funds or these expenses will be recorded in the Special Aid Fund. They will not be part of the general fund budget, so we've removed some of the expenses that we had in the general fund budget to apply them to these grants. There are additional reporting requirements, and districts have to submit their plans to the state, their plans for use of the federal funds by July 1st, and there is emphasis on prior prioritizing non-reoccurring expenses. The concept is you should be matching one- or two-year, one-time expenses or two-time expenses related to the coronavirus to the federal money. If a district was to use it for something that was not a one-time expense, there's additional forms and paperwork that have to be done to explain how you are going to support those programs after the federal funds are removed. So we had some good news on the state aid front. We were expecting to receive approximately 2.2 million more in state aid than when we presented back in, I guess it was February, with the executive budget, which was essentially flat other than additional building aid. So you can see, if you look at the top line, that almost the entire increase is the result of foundation aid. Foundation aid is the largest component of our state aid, and this year, just across the board, the state had increased the amount of foundation aid. It's been the largest increase since the inception of foundation aid. And you've heard us discuss that foundation aid has been frozen for many years, at probably five years, I think, and the legislative budget moves toward full funding of foundation aid. And if you look at that white square up on the right at the top number, that would be the amount of full foundation aid that we would get if the formula was allowed to run free. There was no frozen aid, and so you can see the difference, which is the second line, which is the actual foundation aid that we received in 2021 of 8.5 million. And so the state applied four different formulas for school districts, and the one that generated the highest amount of state aid was the aid that you received, and for us, that was the phase-in percent. So that works by taking the difference between the full foundation aid that you would be getting and what you received in 2021, and multiplying it by about 26%, and that result is then added to your 2021. So that's how we got to the almost 10.6 million. The good news, or the optimistic news, is that the goal is to increase that to the full amount of funding, which would be 16 million over the next two years. So that would be wonderful news for us. There is concern about the sustainability of those kinds of increases over the next couple of years for the state, even though the economic environment is certainly improving. So it's not something that we can count on at this point, but it's something that we could hopefully be optimistic about down the road. And just to put the increase in state aid into perspective as a proportion of our total aid, this year in 2021, state aid accounted for about 7 and 1/4%. With the increased amount for next year, it accounts for about 7.98, so roughly 8%. So if we did go up to the 16 million, then it would be, state aid would account for probably closer to 10% of the district's budget. There was also an allocation in our state aid run for universal pre-kindergarten, about 642,000. Apparently, hundreds of districts had received this, or at least close to 200, for the first time. And this is also accounted for in the Special Aid Fund. It's not part of your general fund budget, and preliminary information is that we can only count on this, districts can only count on this funding for two years, and we're waiting guidance to see, well, what happens after that if we could move forward with something. The grant amounts are not going to cover the full amount of a pre-K program, and that information was given to us by several sources, including SED Office of Early Learning, who runs or is responsible for pre-K in the state. And there would be challenges for districts that were trying to set up a program for September, given all of the logistical challenges. So they are right now being bombarded with questions from districts like us who have this allocation to try to determine what an implementation process looks like. So we'll be attentive to this over the next several weeks and months as more information So we propose to use the revenue for really three purposes. One is to support our instructional programs and services, another is to reduce our tax levy and our budget, and the third is to strengthen our financial condition for the long term. So at the March meeting, I indicated that we had a bottom-line increase of one FTE, and that was primarily for a social worker to provide social and emotional support to our students, particularly as we come out of the challenging circumstances of the current year. I also mentioned that staffing meetings were underway, and all of our FTE and our staffing numbers were preliminary. So as a result of the staffing meetings that happened later in March, and analyzing preliminary registration for classes, it appears that we're going to need three additional FTEs at the secondary school to reflect additional enrollment in specific classes. And again, this is still preliminary information, but that's where we are at this point. I would also note that the increases in these FTEs follows reductions that we made last year around this time or later in overall FTEs. And I think, well, we made 4 million in reductions in 2021, 2 million was in staffing, and there were nine teaching positions that were eliminated basically as a result of attrition. So that's an important perspective to have. And overall, FTEs are down because we're moving or transferring positions that are in the budget currently and that now, well, they're not currently, we took them out and they would be charged to the grant. There's also an ICT position at the high school to support science and social studies in grade nine, and we also have added an allocation. We're exploring the possibility of a limited summer school transportation service. So there's an allocation that we added to the budget for that. Okay. The second proposed use is to reduce the budget and the tax levy, and I kind of alluded to how that happens because when we have the federal aid and it's in the Special Aid Fund, it enables us to move some of those one-time pandemic-related expenses from the budget to the federal funds, to the grants. So you may recall when I presented the budget in March, I doubled the amount for summer schools, so we had an additional allocation in the 400 range for our robust summer school. Those expenses were removed from the budget with the intent of charging them to the grant. We also removed our co-pilot teachers, who if we are required to have virtual and have different rules for social distancing, those would go to the grant as well. We also have done, as you know, maintenance and ventilation projects, and we're going to consider as well charging some of those to the grant. So again, before we had the additional aid, our levy was at 231, and now it's at 1.98 as a result of, partially as a result of moving these expenses out of the budget. One of the third purposes is to strengthen the financial condition, and this is really as a result of reducing our general appropriation of fund balance to support the budget. That chart shows you, and the underline in red is the general appropriation, and that's the amount that typically comes out of a surplus from the prior year that we roll recycle into the next year. And you can see in 1718, we were at about 550, then we went up in 1819, came down a little bit for the next two years, and so it brings it down, what we're proposing for 21-22, by about 25%, 300,000. And that will enable us to sort of shore up our other restricted reserves and for other And as we've done probably for the last 10 years, we're going to continue to utilize our reserves to support the budget. And one of the ways we do that is to fund capital projects in the budget. And if you look at the second line on the white chart, you see the return of surplus from 1819 projects. So if you look at 1819, our appropriation for capital projects was about 1.4 million, and so those projects have now all been wrapped up and final cost reports have been filed, and we have a surplus of about 10%, or if you look all the way to the right, about $146,000. So our plan is to add that to our appropriation for capital projects to support transfer to capital. So that's an increase from what we planned to do back in March. So we had planned to do the pool ventilation system in the high school and Southwoods Roof and Masonry, and now we're going to add that 146 and start addressing some district-wide masonry projects with that, kind of recycling the surplus from 1819. We're also going to continue to use our restricted reserves. To the right, those show the reserves that we have and the June 30th financial statement balances. We propose to use about 4.9 million in total. The red dots are the reserves that we've used this year and actually the last probably nine years, and the green dot is the teacher's retirement system reserve, and we're proposing to use that, about 500,000, to cover the difference in the employer contribution rate for 21-22. And these are restricted reserves set aside for just those specific purposes, so they will offset the benefit line items in the budget. And then just to review, so I went through pretty quickly before the appropriated fund balance, so now, oops, so now you see the breakout to fund the capital work, the return of the transfer to capital amount, plus our general appropriation of 900,000, that's reduced from 1.2 million, and then under that is the breakout of the restricted reserves, how much of each one of those we're proposing to use to get to our estimated tax levy. And that's sort of the high-level end detail of where we are from a revenue perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. I just have a couple of questions. How quickly do you anticipate us receiving the federal and state funds?
The state funds will, they will come through in, I imagine, and there hasn't been any information to say that they would be dispersed any differently than our typical state funds. So they come in, I think, October, November, we get our first state aid payment, so. And then the federal funds, we're actually meaning to talk about that. There's a process, an application for that as well.
So are these given to us over time in installments, or do we get a one lump sum from each?
Typically not, if they're run like other grants, it's not a lump sum. You request certain amounts, you submit, there's filing reports, quarterly statements, and that's how the funds typically run. So I'm assuming it's going to be the same way.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question was, the allocation of a portion of the state aid for universal pre-K, does that mean that we're receiving funds that must be used in that way? And if we choose not to do a, start a program like that, because we don't know how, the longevity of this type of aid, where does the money go from there?
Well, we don't get it unless we have a pre-K program, and that is a process. So what the state, whether they reallocate it, I don't know. I just, I am aware that they did say if you couldn't get it up and running, say for September, or you could get a proportion of it if you did it for half-year or something like that.
Andy?
Hello? Thanks, Dr. Ruffo, for the presentation. Just had a quick question. I know we're waiting for guidance about the federal revenue, and I know that you did mention that 20% of the funds have to be used to offset learning loss. Has there been any clarification or indication on how to quantify that?
How to quantify learning?
How do you tell 20% of what? Or how do you determine that?
I'm sorry, the 20% is 20% of the funds.
Okay, just saying, so the term was to offset learning loss, right? Any idea what they, how they determine that, or you don't know yet?
I don't, well, we have a sense that learning loss would be, funds to, like summer school, for example, was defined as a type of trying to offset learning loss. So programs to support kids, summer school, before-school programs, things like that.
So Dr. Ruffo is doing a great job, but I'll take the learning loss question. So we've been talking with the building principals at all 10 buildings, and we've been very pleased, actually, at the progress that we've been able to make this year. We do recognize that there are some students in both the virtual environment and the in-person environment that have struggled this year, and so we're measuring where students are with what we call our universal screening instrument, NWEA. You're going to have a presentation from us at an upcoming board meeting. This is an instrument that we administer three times a year. We're benchmarking to where we were last year, but we're also benchmarking the levels of progress that students are making. So what we've seen is what you would expect. Last spring, the learning slowed down, then it's accelerated since we've gotten back, and the question is, how much of that will we catch up? Hopefully, for most students, we'll catch all of it up, but we know for some students that there's going to be some additional work that needs to be done. So an obvious first-line strategy is going to be to offer a more robust summer school program, and so what Dr. Ruffo initially did was put that program in the budget. Then when we saw these grant funds and we could take that program out of the budget and assign it to the grant funds, that seemed like the right way to do it. Hopefully, we don't have to have this robust summer school every year, just this year. So that's where we're putting that 20% is towards that robust summer school, knowing that it will help those kids that need a little extra boost.
Dr. Ruffo? Yes, thank you for that presentation. Very good. I have a couple of questions. One is, in one of the slides, you had something called Special Aid Fund, and it sounds like it falls outside the general fund. I never heard of that, so if I didn't hear about it, the taxpayers probably don't know about it. So could you, and I have another question after that, but, so can you give a little information about that and some, perhaps send some information to us about that? Because I couldn't find anything on that. I don't know the purpose. You know, these are things I need to understand. Okay? And do you want the other question now, or after?
Sure, I'll take them both, and then I'll answer the first.
Okay, great, thank you. So on the tax levy, I saw something that was a surprise to me. The, it showed 6,531 students for the current school year. And then for the following proposed budget, it's reduced by approximately 200 students. I, I was surprised to see that. I'd also like to know, with 200 students at $31,000, say, to educate a student per year, that's $6 million. So that amount of less students, is that reflected in the whole budget as far as less resources, less labor, less, less everything?
Okay, I'll address the second one first. The, what you saw was the property tax report card, where we are required to, to provide numbers on enrollment. And they are, in the instructions, it's very specific to the enrollment number because it's a, because all districts do it, they need to have uniformity in the reporting. So the number that we have to put for this year is the beds day enrollment data, and then I use the most recent data that, that is available in, in our system. And we know that while you show that, that small, that percentage-wise, a 3% reduction, that it is likely, because we know that lots of students register from this time into, into September, and particularly over the summer, that that number is likely to increase. So that is the number that I submitted, because that is the, we have, it's important that we have documentable, if that's a word, information that I present. So it's the beds day number, and then the most recent number that's in the Infinite Campus system for registration. But it does not include an estimate for between now and, and the end of the school, beginning of the school.
And I'll just elaborate, we're in the process of doing kindergarten registration right now, so what we've found over the last several years is that parents register for kindergarten later and later in the year. That's a little bit of a challenge for us. So Dr. Ruffo's using the numbers that are in hand, but I'm sure we're several hundred kids short of where we think we'll probably be with kindergarten registration when all said and done. And then special aid fund definition, please?
Yes. So this, the special aid fund is where we record all of our grants. So, and it's part of the treasurer's report that's presented. You have your general fund, special aid fund, food service fund, capital fund. So those are, those are part of, of the reporting. And expenses that, they are not part of the, the budget vote, they are separate funds. And currently, any of our federal grants are all recorded in the special aid fund. And that's how this, that's how this money is being distributed and will be recorded as part of the special aid fund. And then in, I think it's August, there is a, there is a presentation of all of the federal grants as well, for the, the total amounts of our allocations.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Tom?
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. I noticed that you don't have your glasses on today.
Yes, it was, it was a little bit of a gamble, but I saw very well, thank you.
Can you explain that foundation aid and the increase over the five years, how that works?
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'm just going to go back to it. So, so the 2 million, the difference, what they're trying to get us to, what they're trying to move us toward is that top number, which is that 16,300,000, our full foundation aid. And right now, we're, we're at 8.5, or our 2021 allocation was 8.5. So most districts are not fully funded to their, their full foundation aid. So this was the, an attempt to start addressing that gap in between what we would be getting with what we're actually getting. So that difference between the full foundation and what we received in 2021, that difference was 7.8 million. And they had, I think I've mentioned four different types of formulas that they applied to districts. And whichever formula resulted in the largest amount of state aid is the, is the one that they ultimately applied. And for us, it's called the phase-in percent. So they took that difference and they multiplied that 20, that difference by .2625, and that result is the 2,630,000. That then was added to your, the actual foundation aid for 2021, and that resulted in our 2122 foundation aid, our base aid for 2021, plus the phase-in amount. So next year, presumably, they'll run this again.
But we'll have a higher base.
And, right, and then you'll...
So was that the number that used to be like 19% or 18%? Was that a lower number that we had last year?
No, last year it was frozen, so it was 8.5 as well.
What percentage was it?
They didn't, they, they didn't apply this type of formula to it last year. This is a new application.
Oh, okay.
So it's, this is the first year of the phase-in.
Okay. Because I guess, was this part of, because I remember, Dr. Rogers, we had spoken about, like, if we had done some certain projects, we would get a certain percentage. And I remember, like, in the upstate schools, they were getting like an 80% number, and we couldn't make, let's say, it was for the solar energy.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
But here, we were like, well, you guys are only giving us 20%, it's not going to work.
Right.
Right, I recollect the conversation. So there are two different kinds of aid, well, there are a lot of different kinds of aids from the state, but I'm going to contrast two of them. Foundation aid is unrestricted aid, it can be used for operating expenses of schools. The aids that we were talking about are reimbursement aids, and so they are, once you spend money on a certain type of program, the state will partially reimburse you for some of those costs. So the nice thing about unrestricted aids like foundation aid is that we can apply them where we feel like the priorities are here, but they're all generated by a formula. Those reimbursement aids are generated by not only how much you spend, but also a formula of what percentage of reimbursement you get. So for districts that do not have a lot of fiscal capacity, that percentage of reimbursement is higher, and a lot of upstate districts fall into that category. For districts that have more fiscal capacity, that reimbursement is lower. The foundation aid was established by the state after the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit. This was a New York City-based lawsuit that said the state was shortchanging schools with the amount of aid that they gave. So the state came up with a very generous formula, but then never fully funded it, because we went into the 2008 recession the very next year. So this was established in 2007, the recession in 2008, and it's largely been frozen ever since. So this is the first dramatic move towards funding what they promised back in 2007. So on the one hand, we're enthusiastic about this. On the other hand, having seen it stall for 13 years, everyone's a little nervous about whether the remaining 75% is going to get paid or not. So it's, our strategy has been to kind of take half of it and return to the taxpayers in the form of reducing the levy and shoring up the reserves, and take half of it and restore some of the programs that were cut last year, so that we keep the program going. And that's our way of kind of hedging against if the future, the state doesn't feel next year like they can continue this progress. If they do, that's going to put us in a really good position to make some decisions.
So then, does that base stay a year? So let's say that now, that a basis increases, it's frozen, like you could get the formula and getting the 2 million, is that, is that like at a minimum, are we going to get the 10 million next year?
If it, if it, assuming...
It still would increase, because we're getting more than before.
Correct.
So we're saying at a minimum, will we keep the 10 million?
That's our expectation. So the state budget, of course, is also being propped up with federal funds. So the, the only question mark in that, we assume that this is now the new floor. We went from eight to 10, and even if they freeze it, we'll be frozen at 10, which is better than being frozen at eight, unless the federal funds that are propping up the state budget go away, in which case, what they've been calling it in Albany is a fiscal cliff. So we're, we're going to obviously be very attentive to that. And again, that's why we didn't want to become too dependent on this, because the state's dependence on federal money to, to pay this.
Okay, then my other, I have a couple of questions. My other question was, so for this universal pre-K, did we have any plans to have universal pre-K? And if so, what would be, do we have any estimate on what it would cost, how much of a percentage this would be? Like, how much money would we be leaving on the table that we didn't do?
So I'll let Dr. Ruffo answer the money questions, I'll answer the planning question. There were a lot of things that were hinted at before the state budget was adopted, possible tax increases, marijuana legislation, you know, there were a lot of things that were leaking out. Nothing about this came out prior to the budget appearing, so this is a little bit of a, a startle for everyone. On the one hand, $670,000 is a lot of money, but to start a pre-K program, it's kind of not a lot of money. You're talking about a 14th grade, you know, for us to, to run. So what we have done, and Dr. Ruffo's really led the way on this, she's reached out to the, there's an Office of Early Learning at the State Ed Department, and there are a lot of districts like us that have never had a universal pre-K program, that see this surprising grant in the budget, and we don't want to, you know, forego an opportunity, but it's also kind of hard to see how you get something like this off the ground in two months. And we're, I'm not sure how many kids a program like this would serve. So we're going down two tracks simultaneously. One is State Ed Department, one is a, a partner. So the scope organization that runs the before and after-school program also runs daycare. We ran daycare for emergency workers all spring. So we're talking to them as well about what possibilities may exist, but I, I don't have a plan to bring you yet, because this is really sudden and unexpected. So as soon as we get our arms around it, if there's an opportunity here, and it's good for kids, we'll be thrilled to bring it to you, but we're just not there yet.
And then my other question, with that proposed use of support, you know, where we pay down, like teachers, parents, is there anywhere where we make those decisions, does that impact any of our interest payments, like I was making, or is it just that we're paying and stuff off and not having a liability?
In terms of the, in terms of the restricted reserves, it's, it's just paying, it's supporting the budget with, with these funds, so paying off a liability.
Right, but it's not interest associated, is it?
No.
We're just kind of reducing our future liability.
Correct. Is that, is that it? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. All right, approval of the minutes of the March 15, 2021 meeting. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Ms. Cheng. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Approval of the minutes for March 24, 2021 meeting. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Cheng and Mr. Rotolo, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Ruffo, the treasurer's report?
The treasurer's report, which is prepared by the district treasurer, shows the cash on hand for the month end, February 28, 2021, was 105,866,289.24. It shows bank balances and all cash accounts were reconciled to the book balances and were properly collateralized in accordance with the district's banking agreements and investment policy.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Ruffo on the treasurer's report? All right, may I have a motion? Mr. De Filippo, seconded by Tom Rotolo. No questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Dr. Rogers, you're up.
Thank you so much. We're going to have a report from the H.B. Thompson Middle School Student Council representative. I know you were anticipating a presentation on world language from us, and I see Dr. Balsamo's with us. I'm going to ask Dr. Balsamo if he wouldn't mind giving the presentation next month to help us out with a little bit of time management that we're trying to do. So I do appreciate all the effort that you put into getting this ready for us this month, and we're looking forward to seeing it, because I know the data that's in the presentation, and it's really exciting stuff to share with the board, so I do not want to overlook it. But thank you for your patience and flexibility.
We are happy to present you this evening. My name is Salem Pryor.
And my name is Hallie Fishvine, and we are eighth-grade students at Harabee Thompson Middle School. Tonight, we are here to tell you about all the great things students and staff of HBT have been doing since November.
In December, the Student Activity Club sponsored a holiday movie afternoon, where 46th graders showed up to enjoy a home loan. Also that month, the first edition of the HBT Herald, our school newspaper, was published. What an amazing job to do.
Every year, staff and students of HBT look forward to celebrating Multicultural Week. This year, it was a little different. For a week in February, activities took place in advisory and in our language classrooms. We were able to share, do our own cultural traditions, and learn about those of our fellow students through a variety of lessons, performances, and activities.
Also in February, HBT sponsored a Books with Botswana book drive. Students and staff donated over 500 books for kids in grades four through eight. They were sent to a school in Botswana so they could start a library.
Things at HBT really started to pick up in March. The champion HBT pythons were back in action at the annual Kid Oyo Hackathon. In an extremely close battle, the team ended regulation tied for first, but the final judging left us in sixth, in second place, just behind Matt Hassett. We'll be back for the trophy.
In honor of St. Patrick's Day, the Student Activity Club hosted a cornhole tournament for sixth graders. Kids got to try their luck for a fun afternoon. It was such a success. We're hosting another tournament this week. This time, it will be held outdoors. Also, to celebrate the warm weather in St. Patrick's Day, eighth-grade orchestra students, accompanied by Ms. Song, Ms. Riggles, and on the violin, Mr. Murray on bagpipes, played a beautiful rendition of Mitch Pearson's Lament outside. It was a real treat.
March continued with our annual talent show. Although it was virtual this year, it was still amazing. We were blown away with the talent, talented musicians, songwriters, comedians, and creators. We enjoyed watching their acts over a three-day period in advisory. We are happy to announce that the HBT has several students participating in the Capitol Hill Stock Market Challenge. They have placed in the top 100 schools with an average of 9.8551%, returning above the S&amp;P 500 growth. There are 2,100 teams participating in this challenge. Way to go, HBT.
The HBT Galibots team competed and advanced to the SBPLI Long Island Championships in the first LEGO League Challenge, which will be held in April. Also, HBT students were excited to get back on the field when sports started in March. We are looking forward to continuing to play for the remainder of the school year.
The HBT Women in Business Club is sponsoring a Shark Tank competition. Our students are mentored by the Sciocet High School Women in Business Club members. The Shark Tank competition will be held in May with the Sciocet Business Advisory for judging this competition. We are continuing our Fun Friday themes with days such as Pajama Day, Sciocet Pride, Hawaiian Shirt Day, and March Madness. Students and staff look forward to these days each week. We also just wrapped up our annual wellness week. We watched meditation videos in advisory, painted inspirational rocks, and enjoyed yoga and zumba at lunch.
This week, HBT students and staff are participating in the daily activities for No Place for Hate. Looking ahead, we are excited for our annual musical. This year, we will be putting on Shrek Jr. Also, in May, we will be having our annual spirit week. This is always an HBT favorite. Students from all grades will work together on teams to participate in... Students from all grades will work together on teams to participate in different activities. This year will look a little bit different, but it will still be great.
It is hard to believe that this year is coming to an end. I think it is safe to say that the students and staff of HBT really came together this year and made the best of a very unique situation. We look forward to moving on to Cyosset High School. Thank you and have a good night.
Thanks very much to Hallie and Salem. They did a terrific job, and obviously, there's a lot going on at HBT. And late-breaking news, HBT and Southwoods Chamber orchestras are going to combine to do a joint concert, and this is a fundraiser to work on the issue of anti-Asian-American hate, and they want to draw attention to that, and they want to do fundraising for that as a cause. So I'm really proud of them for taking this on. I'm looking forward to the concert, and we'll be sending out some information about when that will be taking place. So I did want to update the board on some things that have, that we raised at last month's meeting, and, you know, some of the progress that has been made in the intervening weeks. So the Stillwell Park transfer that we announced last month, we've been meeting with community groups. We held a forum here last Wednesday night for the community to ask questions and give us feedback and suggestions. Lots of good questions, lots of great ideas. There is on our website, and the link is in this presentation, it'll be posted online, homepage on our website with all the information about this proposal, so that members of the public can access information. And what we've been doing is compiling all of the questions that we get into a frequently-asked questions document that is a living document on the website. As new questions come in, we constantly update the document. So this is unchanged from last year. This is the sale. The elements of the sale is that the property transfer is for a dollar. We would improve the property with a combination of monies from school district sources and from county sources, and then we would have that property to use for school district purposes throughout the year, and then the, the existing users would continue to have access to the property. All of the usage permits would transfer over with the property over the course of the next several years. We've refined, in response to some of the community feedback that we've received, the vision for the project and the layout of the project, some of the features. Here are synthetic turf fields in order to improve the playing surfaces, especially in bad weather, a one-mile perimeter asphalt-running walking track that we think will take the place of a high school track that many senior citizens were using during the day while school was closed, and this will provide them with an opportunity, playground for younger children, and some safety improvements to the property in terms of having security onsite and surveillance video and some better lighting, and improved parking on the site. So a resident of ours had suggested that I go on a Saturday and see what the parking looks like there, so I did go this Saturday, when there was a soccer tournament and three Little League games, all going simultaneously, and I got a very good impression of what the parking looks like there in the middle of a very busy day. Gave me some ideas for things that we can do to tweak this, and we'll be talking with the architects about how to deal with that. Just the next steps, there's a multi-step process. It needs to be approved by school district voters to move forward, it needs to be approved by the county legislature, and there needs to be a bill that goes through the state legislature as well. And as I said, it would be a combination of financing sources, both county funds and school district funds, for a total investment of about $10.5 million. Some of the frequently asked questions that came up, what are the estimated operating costs? We took a conservative number for operating costs, about $315,000. We've been talking about what the offsets were, because that was another question that was frequently asked, are there savings that we will have? We think we'll have probably $43,000 in savings from busing that we currently do to other properties. The Cyosset Soccer Club has pledged money that they're currently using for lighting at Stillwell Fields. Since lighting would be part of this project, they would pledge those funds to support the ongoing operating costs of the project. And we have done some research on whether it would be more cost-effective for us to do the turf maintenance in-house, when you have more than just one turf field, and we think that that would be a much more cost-effective way to do things, probably save at least $75,000 a year. Staff thinks that would be actually a little higher. So we do think that there are some offsets to these operating costs that will make this a less costly facility to operate. Another question that came up a lot is, how will usage be prioritized? And so the one thing that would be different about this property is that as school district property, the school needs would take first priority. I don't think that there will be a lot of conflict with the existing use permits, because those permits are really designed around school activities, because it's the same kids either way, whether they're at the school, or they're, they're doing a school function, or they're participating in a club function, that they're the same students, and so the clubs actually work around our schedule. So I think those things will work well together, but school district would have first priority, the existing usage permits would transfer, they'd have second priority, and then if there was any time that was not spoken for already, that would be available to people who wanted to apply for a usage permit. At the bottom of the page here is that homepage I mentioned, and we also see and have a vision for this project for uses other than athletics. So I mentioned the perimeter walking and running track, but we think that the, the potential of having the 270-acre preserve right next door creates opportunities for in-district environmental and outdoor education trips. We're inspired by an Autism Nature Trail that is in Lettrow State Park, and we think we could create a sensory trail here that does many of the same things. There's room to put a small portable stage and lawn. Our students love to do outdoor performances, and this would give them a natural place to do that, and we would add some playground equipment, because we know that families have children of all ages, and this would give the younger ones a place to play. So more to come on that, and a lot more information than that on the website. So we did have our presentation from Salem and Hallie. We'll leave the world language presentation to next month. Important update, we had a couple of snow days, one remote day, but we are not going to have to be open for instruction on May 27 and 28. Those are the Thursday and Friday before Memorial Day, so I know people are always anxious for this announcement, and we'll be, we will keep the current district calendar, which means we'll be closed on those two days. We'll send something around through district communication organs, just reinforcing that, but I wanted to at least let the board know before we notified the public at large. I'll talk a little bit about social distancing guidelines, and I'll talk a little bit about commencement activities. So the quarantine rules, there's been, you know, certainly a lot of attention paid to the fact that the CDC has talked about reducing social distance from six feet to three feet in schools under certain circumstances, and what the implications are for our in-person activities. And to get there, there are a lot of aspects of this we have to understand. First of all, is the close contact rules. These are the rules that our contact tracing team, the Department of Health Contact Tracing Team, use to determine who is a close contact when there is a case of COVID, who is going to be required to quarantine when there's a case of COVID. Those rules are not changing under this guidance, so it's a, within a space of six feet, with or without masks, irrelevant, for a total of 10 minutes over a 24-hour period. So even if two people are together for two minutes, two minutes, two minutes, two minutes, by the time you get close to 10 in any one 24-hour period, then you meet the definition of close contact. The good news is, fully vaccinated persons, even if they meet the definition of close contact, don't have to quarantine after they're exposed, and we know 16-year-olds are now eligible for the vaccine, which is terrific news, but they've only been eligible for a couple of weeks, so even if you had a vaccination early on, you have to wait four weeks to get the second vaccination, and then you have to wait another two weeks after that before you're considered to be fully vaccinated. So it's a six-week process that has only just begun, but it's exciting, because it does mean that our students will have that additional safety. So one other bit of new information, the travel rules have changed for the third time in five weeks. So now, as of April 10, quarantine is no longer required after international travel. So I'm updating the charts that I presented at last month's board meeting. As I mentioned last month, we focus on this data literally daily, so that we have a sense of how things are trending, and we use those trends to inform the decisions we make, contact tracing investigations that we pursue. So the yellow line is the county, obviously a big peak right around the New Year's holiday period, and then you see, just prior to the last two weeks, this persistent plateau that we experienced, where cases just were not going down, even though more and more people were being vaccinated. The good news is, that plateau has finally ended, we're finally seeing cases drop, but what we're seeing with Cyosset's positivity rate is that we're not dropping, we did not track the county, and quite the opposite, we had a spike, and that spike was directly related to spring break activities. So the good news is that that spike and the echo from that spike are finally starting to subside. We haven't caught back up to where the county is yet. I'm hoping that we get there as soon as possible. This is a different way to look at similar data. The positivity rate is, of all the people who get tested, what percentage are positive for COVID. This is a chart that says, for every 100,000 people of population, what percentage of them have COVID on any given day? So this is daily cases per 100,000, and there's a seven-day average to sort of smooth out some of the, the noise in the data. The black line is the county, the red line is the Cyosset Woodbury community. It's not exactly the school district, there's no data source that's just the school district, so this is the Hamlets of Cyosset and Woodbury. So the, what you can see is consistently, since, for almost the entire pandemic, our rate of COVID has been less than Nassau County, and that's really good news, because it means that our community has been somewhat safer place to be than the county on average. You can see, though, that that spring break spike, almost towards the right of the chart, not only caught us all the way back up to the county, but surged us past where the county was. So that was obviously a very disturbing development to see. The good news is that we have subsided, and we're back below the county again, but both we and the county are in what the CDC considers to be a red zone. So as long as you're in a red zone, the only way at high school you can reduce social distance below six feet is if you operate the high school in cohorts. What does that mean? A cohort is like an elementary school classroom. You have the same, let's say, 25 kids who do everything together all day long. They have English together, they have math together, they have science together, they go down to the music room together, they go to the gym for PE together, and they eat lunch together. So that's the only way that this, this new state guidance will allow high schools in a red zone to have less than six foot of social distance. So obviously, we're hoping that these trends will continue, but while we're in the red zone, we clearly don't operate in cohorts in the high school, where you have the same kids sit in the classroom all day long. So there's, you know, we're going to continue to watch this data very closely and see how it can, how these trends hold up over time. Rapid growth of variants, so there isn't testing data for Nassau County specifically, there is data available for New York City, so this is the closest that we'll be able to get to measuring what it's like in the downstate region, but I think it's safe to say that there's a lot of overlap between our community and the New York City community, and the variants have gone from, essentially, every month, it goes up from 27% to 50% to 70%. The variants, we know, are more virulent, meaning that they're more transmissible from one person to another, and a lot of the things that we do to prevent transmission are not as effective against the variants. And we also know that the variants, at least, the initial data appears that they may also be, they may cause more severe disease. The good news is that it appears that all three of the vaccines that have been, that have received temporary approval from the FDA, appear to be effective against the variants, and I think that's, at least in my mind, a good explanation for why we're seeing the precipitous drop in cases over the last two-week period. So even though these variants are worrisome, the vaccine does appear to be a good strategy for overcoming them. Obviously, the worry is that there's still a lot of disease out there, and every person who's positive is someone who is potentially at risk for developing a variant, because the variants are the result of mutation that occurs as the virus is replicating, and it's always potentially possible for one of those variants to be worse, as opposed to not as worrisome. So I mentioned contact tracing earlier. This is an abbreviated illustration from the previous board presentation, but I just wanted to return to it to explain how this works. So we went through all of the contact tracing that we've done over the course of the last 10 days, and estimated, well, first of all, we know exactly how many kids are in quarantine today, and that number is 18, at Cyosset High School. We went through all of the case investigations, as though the students were in classrooms that were spaced at four feet, and asked ourselves, okay, how many kids would we have quarantined if that were the case? And the answer is 176. So that is about 9% of the in-person population at the high school, just for a sense of scale. About 25% of the kids at the high school are learning remotely. There is a neighboring high school that will remain unnamed, that this last week also had about 9% of their kids in quarantine. So this is not, I mean, this is a theoretical exercise for Cyosset, but this is a real-world exercise for other school districts that have kids in with desks much closer together. So we have not experienced transmission in the classroom in Cyosset, not yet, and looking around for something wooden. However, other school districts have experienced in-classroom transmission. So obviously, what we're trying to do is keep everyone safe, and so classroom transmission is a concern. What's, you know, we certainly know what's potentially permitted, but we also know that there are some risks that are associated with fully exploiting what is potentially permitted. Other considerations, so just working backwards from these case investigations, we figured out that this is about, on average, 29 close contacts for every positive case. So then we extrapolated that and said, if we had a very low rate of disease at the high school, which would be just one case a day, which is lower, that'd be about half of where we're at right now, for the rest of the year, we'd have about 1,900 students that would be quarantined between now and the end of the year. So we have roughly that amount who are in-person learners right now, so the, the way a parent would think about this is, I have even odds that my child would be quarantined once between now and the end of the year. So if that's the average, then some kids won't get quarantined at all, and some will get quarantined twice, but on average, we should assume that there will be at least one 10-day quarantine for every child between now and the end of the year. So the, the difference between having 18 kids quarantined and having 176 kids quarantined is certainly participation in things like athletics or other things, you know, clubs and after-school activities that kids like, but it's also, especially for seniors, as we get close to the end of the year, those quarantines could put into jeopardy participation in things like commencement exercises, or prom, or other opportunities that the district has. So when the rate of disease goes down, that potential for quarantine goes down with it dramatically, and so that's also something that we're keeping a very close eye on. And again, just watching the numbers go down, knowing that more 16, 17, 18-year-olds are being vaccinated, and earlier today, we announced a vaccination opportunity for our students, and we hope that parents took advantage of that, and we're going to try and, every time we find one of these opportunities, we're going to fully take advantage of it. So just a quick announcement about moving up events. This has also been a moving target, pun intended, because the state guidance has been changing, but we've gotten some very good news, state guidance, that the activities that they're allowing in sports stadiums, they're also willing to allow for people who use sports stadiums for things other than sports. So our middle schools are planning to use the stadium here. That will allow them to have up to 200 people. There's no way they can do all of these ceremonies at once, it will require multiple graduation ceremonies, as we did last year with the high school, but the good news is that no testing or vaccination will be required. And as we know, vaccination not yet possible, permissible for the middle school age population. Elementary schools- Elementary schools, same thing, outdoor ceremonies. That gets us up to that limit of 200, much better than indoor ceremonies. And there will be other celebratory activities towards the end of the year. And each building has its own special flavor for how they do these things. So, these will be unique to each building, and the building leadership will be communicating with parents. For the high school, our commencement will take place at Hofstra's Outdoor Stadium. Right now, the capacity is 2,600 spectators. We anticipate, based on some new guidance that came out this week, that that could go up. So, we have a meeting with Hofstra later this week to see what they're being told from the state they're allowed to do. We haven't decided on a time yet. This being an outdoor ceremony, we might have a slightly different time than what we've done in the past, and we'll have to identify a rain date as well. But the rules are different here. You have to have either a negative COVID test, and the rules are different if it's a rapid test or a PCR, or proof of vaccination, and not just receiving vaccination, but two weeks after the second dose. So, the district is going to do everything we can to facilitate this. So, we already run a testing site on campus. We've talked to that organization. They're willing to provide us with a lot of capacity. We have some internal capacity for doing testing that we were using for athletes during the winter and fall, fall in quotes, sports seasons. So, that testing capacity will make available as well. But we really want people to get the tests in advance of going to the event, because we don't want to have to turn anyone away at the door because they don't comply with the rules. These are the state's rules, and we have to follow them, or we're going to be out of compliance, and they'll shut us down. Same thing with prom. It'll be necessary to have tests, but we believe that we can do prom in two sessions and still be within the capacity guideline of maximum of 300. So, there'll be a tent, it'll be a rain-or-shine event, no rain day provided. And lastly, first bullet, if circumstances do prevent us from going to a full-in-person learning model at the high school, we will host at least one senior day, where ninth, 10th, and 11th graders learn remotely, and seniors can be in. And we're trying to think about when to do that, so that we maximize the opportunity to sign yearbooks and things like that. So, we need a delivery date on yearbooks. But I'm saying at least one, and I mean at least one, senior day. So, more on that, and obviously, more on us tracking this data literally on a daily basis, so that we have a sense of where we stand. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Are there any questions about the superintendent's report before we move on to Citizens Advisory Committee? Okay. Michelle Yen is here from the Citizens Advisory Committee, and Michelle, it's so nice to see you here.
Good to see everybody. I hope everybody's been well, and their family as well. To report on our last meeting, which was on March 18th, we met with the administration. Dr. Ruffo discussed the draft program budget, which covers the majority of the total budget. We discussed the impact of COVID requirements on the budget. The guidance was still pending on the social distancing, but the budget is being conservative, using the six-feet, that we've discussed approach. The district is not expecting an increase in enrollment, but it may happen. Drafted a program budget for the year, we had an increase of 1FT on social workers in the 28-25 code, but as Dr. Ruffo said today, that staffing meeting had some additional. So, this is last month, so you've already got a quote-up on this, but I'll continue with my report. The transportation increase was based on contractual services tied to the CPI. The reserves are being used to cover employee benefits, and the budget presentation is online. We discussed the revenue budget also, the American Rescue Plan, with the learning loss being funded as part of that, and the state increase under the aid was being considered, and luckily, we got it. Then, we discussed the Stillwell Fields propositions, that it needs voter approval to transfer the property ownership to the district, and as well as an investment in the improvements. We discussed the cost of ownership, as well as possible revenues. We discussed that the county's funds of $3 million were earmarked by Legislative La Fisane, and to assist with all improvements, that the cost would be covered through debt service of 5.5 million, and reserves 2 million, and that we didn't expect to have an impact on the property taxes, since the district is going to be rolling off some old debt. That presentation is also on the website. We did recommend, from the committee, that you give notice to the local civic groups, so they can be involved in the process. And I believe you, for having these meetings, makes it eligible for everybody to attend. We made a mention to the administration that the Government Finance Officers Association is having, back then, it was having a federal funds fair, and that there might be some grants available to the school district. And Dr. Ruffo was going to pass that on to the district's grant writer, and hopefully, we'll get something possible out of that. And our next meeting will be April 26th. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There's no correspondence or legislative items. We'll move on to audience to the public. You have to be a resident to come up to the podium, but once you do, please write down your address at the ledger, introduce yourself to the board. You'll have an initial four minutes to make comments or ask questions. When everybody has gotten their opportunity to go for their initial four minutes, with time permitting, you can come up a second time. We don't discuss specific teachers or specific students because of privacy rules and education law. And lastly, we don't poll the board, but please feel free, at this point, to come up and introduce yourselves.
Good evening. My name's Mark Edelman, and I have a daughter who's a senior. I lost my father to COVID in November. I do take it very seriously, but I felt the need just to express my feelings about the seniors. The seniors have not seen the other half of the alphabet in school since March of last year, and soon, they will be off to college. The juniors, sophomores, and freshmen will have next year, and the year after, and so on, to rekindle their friendships. Now, sure, my daughter sees her friends, but there are many other students who she has not seen, her school friends, friends that she's had classes with year after year after year. My daughter was so happy spending time with the girls on the soccer team again, getting to see all those girls that she didn't get to see. I teach at Roslin High School, where all of the students are back. I've been able to see firsthand the changes in some of the students. At the end of class, they now wait for friends who they did not have in the class before. I ask them how happy they are that their friends are back, and they're like, they respond, "So happy." I know that you are concerned about the physical well-being of the students. I do, I get it. But I'm concerned about their emotional well-being as well, besides, as I'm sure you are. But besides the fact that the students do not learn as well at home, and that many students are not themselves socially, and that they're lonely on the days that they don't go to school, there could be depression, all those things you read about, all these things are happening. But I guess my point is that, if Roslin can get the whole school back, then perhaps we can just get the seniors back. Many of, I mean, the seniors are going off to college, they are not, they have not seen them since last March. Like, I just want to really make sure you understand that they're just going to be leaving and be on their way, and the last time they have seen the other half of the grade is last March. And many, many schools are trying to get the kids back. Every, in fact, everyone's saying, "We got to get them back, we got to get them back." And there's a whole trend, everyone's trying harder and harder and harder. And I, I tell people, I go, "That's not, I mean, we're not doing that in Syossett," and I really wish they were. I mean, I really, I really would love them to get back. My questions are, if, if we leave the red zone, are we going to go back to school? Is that part of the plan? Or is it not? The numbers that, you know, you'll have this many people be out, and I don't know how they came up with exactly the numbers, but, you know, I'm a math teacher, I'm a very, you know, numbers-oriented guy. I don't know if they're counting the people who are in a corner, not sitting next to anybody, the people on the sides. You go to some classes, you're going to have the same students that are sitting next to each other. I don't know if it's actually 28 for each one. I'm not sure about that. But I do know that if perhaps someone was quarantined, well, they did, they will go to school, if they're going to school every single day, then they could make up those 10 days that they were quarantined for. They might end up in school much more anyway, when all is said and done. I just feel like fear is getting in the way. And I just, you know what, it's not, I feel like my daughter, she doesn't complain, she's, she loves Syossett, it's just, but when we discuss, it's just the idea that they're not going to be with them at all. Like, I just, now that they're getting quarantined, more of them, I appreciate that the school is now trying to get more of them vaccinated. Maybe, if we do leave the red zone, we could take that jump and really try to get these kids back in for a half a quarter even, if that's it, just so they can see these people, have some normalcy in their life, leave high school the way they came. Just, I mean, your friendships with people that you go to school with, your school friends, count. It is not just about the immediate friends in your life. People form lots of relationships with other people, people that you go to school with. And I just, I just wish, I just do not want the seniors to be forgotten. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman. Is there anyone else for audience to the public? Going once, twice? Okay, that concludes audience to the public.
So, thank you for your comments, Mr. Edelman. We're sorry for your loss. I can answer the questions on the math, and you're certainly astute. So, in the diagram that I put up, you see if someone is in the center of a 3x3 grid, then there's eight people that aren't them. And the number that we use is about five, and that's because the person who is COVID-positive is not always in the dead center of that 3x3 square. So, sometimes, they're in the back corner of the room, and then there's only three people. Sometimes, they're in the middle of a side, and then there's five people around them. Sometimes, they're in the middle of that 3x3 box, and then there's eight people around them. So, it works out to about five. So, the other, and there is overlap, because in a nine-period day, first of all, they're not, hopefully, in class all nine periods, they might be in lunch somewhere where they are six feet apart. So, we took a sample of kids from the high school, and then looked at how many classes they had in common, in order to come up with a factor that we use, we call it the overlap. So, we figured that, over the course of that, let's say, seven periods of classroom instruction, there would be overlap between the classes, because some kids would have same classes together. And so, we discounted for that overlap as well. That's, after doing both of those calculations, that's where we arrived at the 29 per student. And then, by comparing that to this neighboring high school that has about 10% of their kids out, 9% of their kids out, we felt like that was a pretty good reality check on our attempted estimating the number. So, because this is a place that has plans on top of plans on top of plans, of course, we've looked at how we would execute changes to the in-person learning plan. The new state guidance requires that, before we make any changes, we have to do a series of public engagement exercises. So, we've begun the process of thinking about what that would look like, but I'm not prepared to announce any plans to do anything, but we certainly, we will leave nothing to chance. And so, we have plans for all kinds of different contingency scenarios. But for now, we're in the red zone, and so, you know, the, it's hard to speculate on what the circumstances will look like when we exit the red zone, and that data is going to be very important to deciding among the contingencies which one we select.
Okay, thank you. For the discussion items, the first item is the LED Electronic Roadside Timing of Purchase Location. So, Mr. De Filippo?
Well, we've been discussing this for some time, I think over a year or longer. What is it you want to talk about? The location? I would think that, at this point, the superintendent had contacted the architect and may have some ideas on this. You, Dr. Rogers, did you want to add anything to that?
Last month's board meeting, you suggested that there were four likely locations, Robbins Lane, Bayless, the high school, and the Woodbury School on Coroner Jericho Turnpike. You know, any one of those locations gets a lot of traffic. I think really, it's a question of where the board wants to locate it. And once you make that decision, then we'll engage the nearby community, if it's in a residential area, to make sure that people in the nearby houses understand what we're about to follow through on. So, I think it's really up to the board where you think the most visibility would come from.
I guess just my two cents as to location is, Bayless might be a good idea. There's not a ton going on in that area, Woodbury Road, but it does get high traffic, and it's not overcrowded. So, I think that it would, it would be viewed in the way that you might have anticipated it would be viewed. I think at the high school, there's a lot going on right now. We're putting a lot there. We've done a lot of construction. We are potentially going to have the Stillwell Project, and I think maybe adding a lit sign there might, might not be advisable for the time. I don't think Robbins Lane gets much traffic. I just, not as much as Bayless. So, I think that if we're going to invest in a sign, we might as well put it somewhere where there's, there's more travel, so.
So, did you, were you, did you mention the high school?
I did.
Oh, okay, the high school, and Walt Whitman?
I didn't mention Walt Whitman. I actually think that the Walt Whitman sign is kind of hard to see. Sometimes, if I have to go to Walt Whitman, I almost pass Walt Whitman. So, I'm not sure where that would be situated any better. There's not a lot of land around that area, and you wouldn't want to obscure the already obscured Whitman sign. So, again, my preference would be Bayless of all of the schools.
You're looking at the high school and Bayless? Is that it?
I'm looking at Bayless, period. That's my preference, yeah. I don't think that's a good idea right now. I think there's a lot going on at the high school. We've done a lot with the facilities. We're going to be doing, potentially, if the voters approve it, work at Stillwell. And I think, you know, adding lights there, and then we're thinking about a lit sign, and I just think that's a lot.
All right. Well, my idea is that the high school is, like, to me, almost a given, because you got the middle school, and then, if you, the community goes forward with Stillwell, you have a very busy road to communicate to a lot of people, especially at the high school, with the sports, and the board meetings, and the voting, and all that. I, I don't know. Let's hear from some other trustees of what they think.
I believe, I think that the high school actually would be a good location, given also that we have, so in addition to the high school population, you're going to, you have all the young children going to Stillwell Field, so they're going to pass right by it on the weekends. I think Bayless is also a good option, but my only concern with that is, if you don't live in that area, you may never see it.
Yeah, I think also, the high school would be a good location. I don't know about now, but, you know, Tracy mentioned the construction going on with Stillwell, and things like that, but I think that would be a good place. And what I wanted to know is, if we do one sign, will it change the cost if we do another one, or another two later on? Do we know that?
Yeah, I don't think there will be any economies of scale gained or lost by doing multiple signs. The money is in buying the sign itself, and they're basically, they are what they are, and then the labor to install it and build some masonry around it.
A difference, so conceivably, we could put in one sign, and then, maybe at another time, if we decide, put in another one somewhere. Okay?
I don't think there's any advantage to trying to buy two at once. If you buy one now, you buy one later. I think you're spending the same money.
Just real quick, I agree with Andy and Rob. I mean, if, if we were to start with one location, I would absolutely say it's the high school, for obvious reasons. And perhaps, starting with one, and see how. starting with one and see how it goes, and then add on. I'm pretty sure we discussed it initially to go about it this way. So, we could see, you know, feed and action, and then add on later on. Tom?
I think by the high school would be the most important for doing one because Stillwell brings all ages, and the other areas kind of focus on just those specific schools. Whereas you have the high school and the middle school, but also Stillwell brings the little ones, it brings the middle ones, it brings the big ones, it brings everybody. So, there'd be the most exposure, so it would make the most sense.
I also agree that the high school would be the best location, especially now that a lot of parents drop off in the morning and also pick up in the afternoon with all that traffic. And these parents, they like, a lot of them also have kids in elementary schools too. So, having it in high school, that helps to send the message that, whatever information that the school wants to send out. Thank you.
Okay, hearing from everybody, the high school seems to be the primary preferred spot. Dr. Rogers, how long would you think it would take to order the sign, get the sign, put the sign up?
I used to feel more confident speculating before COVID and delays in getting things. But I think this is something that we could probably, we would shoot for trying to get it done by the end of the summer, if that was possible. And if we encountered some sort of delay, I'd come back and let you know. I'd also want to just engage the people who live across the street from the high school to give them a heads-up and hear if they had any thoughts or concerns.
Okay, thank you. Chris, is there anything else on the LED sign?
No, did we want to make a motion on it? So, we, we don't, we're just, so we're just, we're just doing which? The high school?
It's in the budget. So, you've actually passed on the money for it. And it's just, I needed some guidance on where to locate it. But I, you know, I hear consensus around the high school. So, we know what to do next.
Okay, thank you. Next, I just wanted to mention that later on in the meeting, we're going to have the Nassau Bozey's Board and Budget Vote. If anyone had anything that they wanted to share before we, we did vote on that, that's, that's fine. And now would be the time. There are three open spots and only three people running. So, it's an uncontested candidate vote. And last month, Carol and Anna were nice enough to present to us on, on the budget. So, are there any questions about that? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Last month, Andy Feldman mentioned that he would be moving this month to establish an educational foundation. Andy?
Thanks, Tracy. Yeah, last month's board meeting, I discussed establishing a 501(c)(3) nonprofit educational foundation for SEOCET. And I mentioned that I'd be bringing it up tonight. Just some background, more than 6,800 communities across the country have formed independent, volunteer-led, not-for-profit educational foundations, including many here on Long Island. Foundations are established to raise and distribute funds to enhance educational opportunities for all students. They support initiatives that may be beyond the scope of the district's budget, and they actively seek private donations, grants, and additional government funding as an alternate, alternative revenue source. So, the ultimate goal of an educational foundation is to secure an educational environment where the students of the district can continue to thrive and triumph. So, as with any organization we're involved with or any endeavor we undertake, one of the goals should always be to leave it better, and leave it in better shape than you found it for those that come after you. An educational foundation will be a great way to provide for our current students and community and for future generations. So, I move to adopt the following resolution to form an educational foundation. Whereas the Board of Education of the SEOCET School District recognizes that the formation of a SEOCET educational foundation by citizens has been proposed. And whereas it is acknowledged that an educational foundation would be a volunteer, not-for-profit organization established under the laws of New York State as a tax-exempt organization under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code, separate and apart from the school district. And whereas through fundraising activities and tax-exempt donations from individuals, businesses, and organizations, an educational foundation can enrich learning experiences for SEOCET students through grants, scholarships, and awards to teachers and students. And whereas an educational foundation can assist our school district's focus on equity for all students by creating multiple pathways to prepare students for post-secondary success, that can serve as a catalyst for innovation and an investment in education that promotes continuous improvement. And whereas an educational foundation can assist in the funding of new projects and programs that allow students to understand and utilize state-of-the-art advancements in STEAM education, arts education, music, and athletics. And whereas students can benefit from projects initiated by faculty, endorsed by school district leadership, funded by an educational foundation that emphasizes new approaches to teaching and innovative programs which stimulate thought and expand the existing curriculum. And whereas faculty can benefit from funding of professional growth and development opportunities that extend beyond current school district programs and traditional, traditional resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved that SEOCET School Board of Education enthusiastically supports the efforts of the SEOCET community to establish and support the formation of a SEOCET educational foundation.
Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Falco?
For questions, I would just have a comment, which is, over the eight years that I've been on the board, I've been to, you know, civic association meetings and obviously have sat here for Audience to the Public. And I know that many of us have faced questions about, you know, whether we can get creative in figuring out other ways to fund programs, other ways that we can bring in money. And this is the first big idea and way that we can get significant money into the schools, into our programs, that I've seen. And it's been successful in many school districts. To me, this is, this can only benefit our schools and our students and our programs and our staff. And it can only lead to, to progress and to maybe some innovative ideas that we hadn't really thought of before because of budgetary constraints. And so, I do think it's a great idea. Does anyone else have any comments or questions before we vote? Mr. De Filippo?
Thank you. So, in the last nine years that I've been here, on and off, we've talked about ways to get donations into the school. We've discussed ways that certain individuals, there are certain constraints with the, how those donations come into the school and how they can be used. I'm looking at the motion. I am not opposed to the idea, okay? But I, to me, it lacks certain things, like I, this entity is an entity, and it is to operate, I believe, independent of this school district. And this foundation will determine with its own board, or whatever governance, which has not been specified here, will rule on where that money goes. So, they'll go to the SEOCET School District and say, you know, we got this X amount of money, and we want to allocate it to your district here. Okay? That's my understanding. So, is this basically just the beginning, and then there'll be a little bit more substance and framework that will develop after that?
Yeah. So, envisioning this as the first step in the process, where the board decides whether or not they'd like a foundation to begin. But then, how, obviously, we'd have to interview companies that specialize in establishing these types of, these types of foundations. And then discussions would have to take place as to what the bylaws would be, and what the relationship would be between the school district and, just as you said, the relationship between the school district and, and the board that would be running the foundation. And so, it is obviously going to be a multi-step process. This is simply a motion to determine whether or not we want to move forward with a foundation. And then, you know, those are going to have to be very careful steps that we take later on and educate ourselves as to the, the best way to make this work for our district.
Susan?
I just wanted to say that I think it's a fantastic idea, that it provides an opportunity for SEOCET and for the residents and the community to improve the district in ways that we otherwise might not be able to. And that there's so much upside to creating a foundation like this. And it was a fantastic idea. And it was fantastic that Andy brought it to us. It's a great idea.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the resolution passes. Thank you, Andy, so much. All right, we begin with new business. A1 is the approval of staff changes for certified and civil service staff. May I have a motion, please? Anna, seconded by? Mr. Feldman, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A2 is the approval of stipends and hourly rate activities for certified staff. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Falco, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A3 is the appointment of summer school's principal for 2021. May I have a motion, please? Mr. De Filippo, seconded by Ms. Chang, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A4 is the appointment of a per diem substitute principal revised. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Gershon, seconded by Mr. Feldman, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B1 is the approval of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Mr. De Filippo, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B2 is the approval of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Mr. Rotolo, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B3 is the adoption of the 2021-22 budget. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitan, seconded by Mr. Feldman, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B4 is the approval of school property tax report card for school year 2021-22. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Chang, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B5 is the acceptance of the 2021-22 proposed Nassau Board of Cooperative Education Services Administrative Operation Budget. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Feldman, seconded by Ms. Levitan, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B6 is the selection of candidates for the Board of Education of Bozey's, Susan Bergstrom, Martin Kay, and Michael Winek. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chang, seconded by Ms. Falco, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B7 is the acceptance of an audit report. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Gershon, seconded by Mr. Feldman, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B8 is the approval of student club charters. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chang, seconded by Mr. Rotolo, are there any questions? All in, oh, Ms. Chang.
The question that I have is that, what are the, the factors that determine any group from moving up from a group to a club in high school? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I would like to know the, the factors that determine any groups from moving up from, you know, from a group to, to a club in high school.
The high school has a pretty elaborate system for how they determine who starts as a group. And then once a group becomes established, then they become a club. The advantage of becoming a club is that there's a stipended advisor. So, I can't speak exactly to that process. And if there's, I know that they take attendance. They want to see a lot of student interest. They want to see that the interest is going to last over several years. I know that they also, the high school model's empowering students. So, student government is involved in that conversation as well. To go any layers deeper into the process than that, I would need some help from Dr. Durante.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Rotolo?
Yes. What does the cycling club do?
I believe they are a bicycling club. But I don't want you to take my word for it. I'd rather follow up with you after I double-check and make sure. But I, I believe it's a cycling club.
Are there any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B9 is the authorization for contracts for federal Part B funds. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Feldman, seconded by Mr. Gershon, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B10 is the appointment of chief election inspectors and election inspections, inspectors for the school district budget vote and annual district election on May 18, 2021. May I have a motion, please? Mr. De Filippo, seconded by Ms. Chang, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C1 is the acceptance of service contracts. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitan, seconded by Mr. Feldman, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C2 is the acceptance of special education and/or nursing contracts. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Falco, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C3 is the authorization to enter into a cooperative omnia. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chang, seconded by? Mr. Feldman, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C4 is the authorization for a change order. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chang, seconded by? Mr. Gershon, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C5 is the approval of a joint representation disclosure and consent agreement as an engagement letter and consent to join representation. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chang, seconded by Mr. De Filippo, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C6 through C, through eight can be taken together. They are the award of bids for sheet music, electrical construction, and ventilation upgrades. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Gershon, seconded by Ms. Levitan, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C9 is the disposal of broken surplus and/or obsolete equipment and books. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chang, seconded by Ms. Falco, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C10 is, and 11 can be taken together. They are the award of bids for electrical construction and ventilation upgrades at H.B. Thompson. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Chang, seconded by? Mr. Feldman, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? May I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, great. Thank you, everybody.